A meeting to order, the invocation by Mr. Douglas and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Van Meter.
I aheads with this. Lord, thank you for safe travels as we look to that. Safety of everyone attending large gatherings and large gatherings. Everyone deserves. Pray for safety of all of the fonders that serve our community, our nation. Also pray for guidance for local and national.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance by the sacred republic, one nation, God visible.
We do have a quorum with only Commissioner Cato absent. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting on July eighteenth?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Carries could have approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
We're gonna make that one change.
Yes, sir.
Operation.
Um.
Do uh.
Make a motion to move the end of the day's agenda, the abundance point conceptual plan. We'd like to move that to the end of today's agenda. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Get a motion for the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Chairman, make a motion.
All in favor? Carries. Okay, before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. This decision made on rezoning and variance request tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. So, uh, South Wind Village Phase Two, Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Southwind Village Phase Three B off Hereford Farm Road. Uh, this is fifty-five lots on seventeen point two eight acres. This shows the location of the site on the west side of Hereford Farm Road. Uh, this is Southwind Village Phase Three A just to the north. And this section includes fifty-five single-family lots with a minimum lot size of six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet and an average lot size of eight thousand seven hundred and nine square feet. Uh, the minimum setback requirements are forty feet from the center line and five feet from the side and rear property lines, and there are buffers provided at the perimeter of the development. A total of three point nine two acres of open space is provided in this section, and this shows the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Um, Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat of Southwind Village Phase Three B.
Second.
All in favor? Carries? Montgomery? Us trinkets.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation for treehouse trinkets at fifty-eight eighty-one Huntington Drive. Uh, this shows the location of the property, uh, off Old Louisville Road on the north side of Huntington Drive. It is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. This shows the aerial of the site. You can see the existing house, uh, and there is a existing accessory building just to the north of the house that is kind of under the trees on the aerial. Uh, but you can see on the site plan, uh, the residence there and then the detached garage, uh, that building is to be used as the workshop for this business. It is a woodworking business, uh, making wood children's toys. Uh, they cut the wood with a laser and assemble the toys with glue, so there should be minimal noise associated with this. Uh, and the workshop is just used for the assembly and for storage until the items are either sold online or taken to other marketplaces. There's no customer traffic to the site. Given these factors, staff is recommending approval of the provisional home occupation.
Thank you. The owner like to come forward and address the commission?
Evening. I believe it's laid out pretty well.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience in favor of this provisional home occupation? Anyone in the audience opposed, like to come forward and speak? Hey, can I have a motion, please?
Chairman, I make a recommendation for the approval of, of treehouse trinkets.
All in favor? She carries? Butler?
Senator's request for rezoning at five eight two one Rockford Drive, RA to S one special for place of worship and a campground on twenty point seven six acres. This location of the property on the north side of Rockford Drive, uh, just west of the intersection with Old Louisville Road. And currently zoned RA, pretty much everything out there is also zoned RA as well. Again, the aerial view of the property and the plat of the property itself and the site. So the requests, the, the, the request for you this evening is for a church and also a campground. Uh, the first part of it, the church itself, they're gonna keep this building here and rehab it for an office and then build a sanctuary with other, um, uses within it. Be about seven thousand square feet for the sanctuary itself. Uh, they are proposing to have gravel drives and parking, uh, in this area and also through here. Um, that, there is a condition regarding that we'll kind of get into in a moment. Uh, in terms of setbacks, it's one twenty-five off center line of Rockford Drive. And a thirty-foot buffer slash setback around the rest of the site itself. Um, in terms of the campground use, um, that is one that they've basically would be, would be within this area outlined here. Um, and that would be kind of throughout the, throughout, or throughout that area, there could be different, uh, little camp, our little cabins essentially. Uh, there are limited to eight of them per their, uh, narrative. Uh, those could have upwards of six people within them. Again, that's six people plus maybe some additional. Uh, we did not put a limit on the number of people on it. That's one of those things that's a little hard to kind of get, you know, that force perhaps. Uh, these will, these will, these will be built to a residential code standard, uh, so there is some kind of fallback with being a, the number of people that could be within these. Uh, per the applicant, these areas will be used for potentially kind of like a, um, a wide-up campground situation where a family might own one. They also would likely be used for what amounts to places for some of the church's, um, users, uh, to be there. Uh, one of the things that the church does, um, they do provide counseling services, folks who are, are protected by Fair Housing Act, um, that's something they're already doing throughout the, throughout the community. Uh, church itself, um, already has the ability to have counseling facilities within it. Um, there's many throughout the area that do. Uh, but again, that is something that would be potentially within this area. Uh, in terms of, you know, staff recommendation on this, uh, one of the things with, um, this is a commercial use at the, at the end of the day, uh, for the church itself, so we are recommending that the, uh, parking be paved, uh, for this. Uh, there's also a condition from traffic, uh, more for a potential, or the, a potential issue that may come up is one that they don't think it will, but they just want to be clear with it. Uh, they will be required, if this, this is approved, they're in a site plan to provide, uh, traffic counts, basically, of a project access improvements. It may trigger work out here or potentially out here, but again, they were not, they did not think it would, uh, but it's one of those, they wanted to still keep it just, just in case. Terms of future land use, again, churches can go pretty much throughout the community. Uh, it's one of those that use that's in permission every single, um, future land use area. Uh, so from that standpoint, it does meet the intent of Vision Twenty, Vision Twenty Thirty-five. Again, overall, staff recommends approval of that condition. Again, the parking drive areas will be paved, also traffic engineering with a trip generation report per PAI policy. That concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you. Good owner, uh, Mr. Williams, like to come forward and guess this?
I'm Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering. I'm the project engineer, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant, although if there are specific questions for the owner, we do have some representatives from the church here as well. But I, I'd be glad to answer. I have for me.
Up engineering. Thank you. Anyone in the audience in favor of the rezoning, uh, would like to come forward and speak, just please state your name and address?
My concern is the amount of traffic that we're gonna see. Patient. Our children on the road.
You're in opposition.
I am in opposition.
Okay, I was asking if there's anybody in favor. Okay, come on up. You're fine. Speak in opposition.
So my concern is.
We do have somebody in favor? Please come up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so there are children on this road, and I understand that the church is expecting two hundred to two hundred and fifty volume. That's a lot of traffic. I just very concerned about that.
Okay.
Country for a reason. Have a problem with the church at all, but I just think it's an odd situation. Off the road. Not even gonna be seen. My main concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of this proposal?
Same thing with them, traffic.
It's a private street. It's just a one, one street, all private, old residents that's been there forever. And to have that amount of traffic, it's unreal. I mean, there is kids that ride the bikes, that's on golf carts all day long. I mean, we walk our dog and stuff with no problem. It's such a, I mean, the road is just as far as from here to Ronald Reagan.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it's, it's so short, and that amount of traffic is gonna be unreal. Uh, you know, to, to disturb such a private little community right there. That's, that's a lot. And to have these cabins with all these people gonna be coming in and out, that, and we're directly across, and then there's like houses that's like gonna be right around the church that's been there forever. And, um, I, I can't understand why they would want to put a church in the, in the middle of that road, that one little bitty road like that. That's a lot.
Thank you.
I would, I really hate, I don't have a thing against a church, of course, but it's, it's, that's gonna be unreal.
Is anyone else in the audience in opposition to this with a reason other than traffic?
Rockford Drive, which is, I would say, west. Trying to put the church. Came across the traffic. I don't have to say that again.
Right.
Buffer line, the thirty-foot buffer line, it's unto my property, fifty-eight twenty-three, where, I mean, you're talking about construction, talking about clearing trees, campgrounds. I mean, there's nothing back there other than a creek. So, I mean, what, what are we camping for? What are we camping around? Plenty of acres in McDuffie County up by the lake, that, you know, you can put a whole bunch of this stuff, so. I don't have nothing against church by any means. It's not, not a place.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight? So Jed Delong, uh, my parents live on Rockford Drive. Want to preface it by, I even am familiar with some of the board members of this church and know people that have gone to it and helped by the program that they serve the community with. However, the nature of that program caters to addicts, alcoholics. They need help. Fully agree. Have a problem with that. You introduce that, to me, that's a threat stream. Have people that could be trying to get help into the area. Create a traffic created, kids playing in the street. To me, that's a threat stream area. Also introduce people that may want to kick the habit. Okay, so I'm sitting up there. I want to kick the habit now. I dropped something out of my car on the way in. Up a bag of fentanyl. That gonna result in nothing good for the area. Family perspective, residential area. I don't see that element being what we'd want. Again, not a problem helping people. Effective, have that risk of all those people aggregated for programs that usually have a anywhere from an eight to documented twelve percent test rate. Gonna be people with relapse in the area. There's gonna be not necessarily what you want.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? They could have a motion, please?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, couple of questions?
Rockford Drive go all the way through? Or is it just a, is it a dead end?
It's all the way down. Yeah.
It ends in Huntington?
To answer your question, it goes, it goes from Old Louisville, um, uh, west and then turns south, uh, down to Huntington Drive, so it's.
It's currently zoned RA?
Yeah, all of it.
More questions? Think I got a motion on this rezoning?
Make a motion to recommend approval by LRZ twenty-four RA to S one, fifty-eight twenty-one, Rockford Drive.
I have a second.
My second.
All in favor? Carries? Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major PUD revision at seven eighty-five Jones Creek, uh, in regards to development standards for their pool area. Uh, this shows the location of the site within Jones Creek, and it is currently zoned PUD planned unit development, as is all the surrounding property. This shows the aerial of the existing site. You can see the existing pool and pool house on the property. Uh, the proposal is to demolish that existing pool house and rebuild a larger pool house structure. Uh, so this shows that existing pool house and from Tyndale Drive as well. And instead, it, it is intended to be replaced with a larger pool house building. It would be two stories and slightly longer than the existing building, uh, to provide some additional space. Uh, on the ground floor, that would include a larger mechanical room for the pool as well as ADA compliant restrooms, and on the second floor, that would include a meeting room that would be available for rent for, for birthday parties or similar events. Uh, why we're here tonight is that when, uh, this was built, the county did not have specific standards for community recreation areas. Uh, we have since adopted setback and buffer requirements for these areas, uh, that this site does not comply with. Uh, it can stay as it is. Uh, however, when they demolish that pool house and want to rebuild the new structure, the normal expectation would be that they would meet the code requirements. Uh, and this slide shows what those would be. Uh, so essentially, the building would be expected to be within that yellow, uh, line. The pool would be expected to be within that orange line, and there would be buffers required against the residential properties to the west and the south. Uh, now clearly, with the existing site conditions, this isn't particularly feasible. It would require filling in sections of the pool and significant relocation of the building. For topographic reasons, you know, moving the building to the east side of the site is challenging, uh, so, and just for, for probably, you know, practical construction reasons, it's easier to rebuild it, similar to where it is rather than relocating it. Uh, or the original site plan was requesting a four-foot setback for the building. That's roughly the setback of the existing building. Uh, we did receive revised, uh, application documents earlier today, uh, that moved that setback, uh, to seven feet from the property line, uh, so that is shown here, and added an eight-foot tall fence along the west property line to help with the buffering. Uh, the rest of the buffers would stay as is, uh, so that, the eight-foot fence is the addition to the buffer variance. Uh, and then on the south, you know, the existing conditions would stay there, so they wouldn't change anything in that area. Uh, so this shows what the requested building setbacks are. Again, it is seven feet from the west property line for the new pool house structure and fifteen feet from the other property lines, and then twenty feet for the pool, which accommodates the existing pool and some possible space for future expansion, although that is not part of the current plans. Uh, in terms of future development, uh, this is in the neighborhood's character area. It is a community recreation area. It is intended to be part of this neighborhood and serve this neighborhood. So certainly it is in keeping with the future development map. Uh, since the information, revised information was just received today, uh, there, there's been some discussions between the HOA and the residents. Their original staff recommendation was to postpone this request to give them time to kind of work, work out their issues together. We're not gonna change that recommendation because of the, the new information, uh, so the, the staff recommendation is to postpone this request.
Thank you. Owner and applicant, Mr. Tripp, Danny? Yeah, come on up.
Thanks. Um, I'm Tripp Nanny, forty-one thirteen Heritage Ridge, which is in Jones Creek. I'm speaking on behalf of the HOA, Neighborhood HOA, and I'm the president. You probably know the Jones Creek Neighborhood Pool and adjacent pool house approximately thirty-two years old. One of our best amenities that we own is our only revenue-producing amenity within the HOA property. In two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, the HOA, or the Jones Creek Board started discussing long-term neighborhood projects, developing budgets, continuous discussions, and we, we began to prioritize these. Improving the pool house was number one on every vote, number one item. We spent over thirty-three thousand dollars on the pool house during the last three years. It's putting Band-Aids on items, making repairs to the building. We've repatched, reepoxied the bathroom floors three times in the past five years, just because the base is not what they need to have it stick right. Our pool company, Elwine Pools, indicated that we need a new pump room to efficiently, a, a new, an increased pump room size and, and a new pump to increase the efficiency of the water that they're treating. The current pump room is not large enough. In addition, we need some storage space. We need greatly improve the bathrooms for our residents and our pool members. A recent building inspection concluded that the building had major issues in addition to the required storage space. The roof is rotten, needs to be replaced. That's a fact. Uh, there are large holes in the stucco siding. The plumbing's inadequate, and we recently had a complete breakdown in the sewage line overflowing, and you can imagine what that looked like. The only way to completely fix those pipes that are approximately thirty-five years old is to tear up the cement and put new pipes in there. They're just crooked. They've settled and they're crooked. It's gotta be replaced to make it right. It's time for us to build the building right, to make it right for our neighborhood, make it something we enjoy visiting, our neighborhood can be proud of. The bathrooms, as Danielle said, are not ADA accessible. We don't have enough space even for babies to be changed in our current bathrooms. There are no doors on the stalls. We have shower curtains, clearly very little privacy if any. The bathrooms are available year-round. In addition to the pool season, they're also available for people playing tennis and pickleball, because that's the only bathroom there. We've met with several builders and have concluded that in order to improve the building, it would be easier to completely tear it down and start over. This way, we get what we want, we make it right, and we make it something our neighborhood can be proud of. In addition, we can improve the bathrooms, make everything ADA accessible, enlarge the pump room, which is a requirement, and allow more storage space for our swim team. We're expanding the building away from the residential area towards the parking lot. In addition, we're pulling the building further away than it currently is from the adjacent property line, which is directly behind the pool house. As indicated in our submission, we'll also build a new privacy fence to help protect those homes on Tyndale. We strongly encourage you guys to approve it as it is right now. Timing is of the essence. Postponing this only hurts our project. We're trying to start construction immediately when the pool season shuts down, right after Labor Day. If everything goes perfect, our builder is here. If everything goes perfect, we can get done prior to next pool season. That's our timeline, and that's why the timing is so important. To prolong this project for any reason just jeopardizes the completion timeline. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any, on the second floor, are there any windows that would be facing adjacent?
On, on the backside of the building, there will be ventilation fans for the bathrooms, which are currently there also. There'll be no windows on the backside. There will be a new door going on that. As you look at that picture on, where those stairs are, there'll be a door there that's not currently there. The roof line doesn't change but about a foot higher. It much, it's attic space now, and we've never had an adequate meeting room. Now that we lost our clubhouse, we don't meet there, so we have to meet in somebody's house or space that we just come upon.
HOA may meet in this place?
Absolutely. Our board could meet there. We can, we already have pool parties there and events there. They could use that for storage, uh, or for, you know, cakes and food, et cetera, to put it inside instead of out. It could be additional, uh, space for swim team patrons, which, uh, the place is really crowded when they have their meets up there, so they would, they would love it as well.
How, how tall fence are you talking about putting in?
We're, we're asking, I think it's at eight feet, uh, where, which would be a slightly increase over our six-foot var, we'd put six if that's what you want. We don't care. We'll put ten. I, I'm, the fence height doesn't matter.
No, we just received a, that we got an email from the HOA weeks ago saying that six is the standard. I'm not opposed to an eight-foot fence, by the way. I, I.
Yeah, I, and I understand, and that's a, it's a completely separate issue. That fence is facing one of the main thoroughfares in Jones Creek, Hammond's Ferry Road. This fence doesn't face the road. It's kind of in the woods. That area behind the pool house is completely wooded. The house that's closest to it is, uh, the only thing that gets any, anything out of the pool, and we'll protect that as best we can.
I was there this morning, so I know how, how the, how it's laid out.
More questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there one, anyone in the audience in favor of this major PUD revision that would like to come forward? Is there anyone in the audience that is opposed to this major PUD revision? State your name and.
My name's Larry Carter. I'm been a homeowner in Columbia County for the last thirty-five years, and I live adjacent to the pool house, so I'm the one that's could be most affected by this. The current pool, pool house does not conform to the current code or, or setback requirements. Um, and if a variance is granted, it should, should bring the building closer to the setback requirements, not further out of a compliance. Statement that the building was be further away is not true. Not true. Also, a statement that there's no windows on the back of that building is not true either, so that's, you need to be aware of that. At a minimum, this new structure should be adhered to a ten-foot setback from the roof line to my property, I mean, right on top of property. I'm not opposed to a new pool house. We'll do that in a second. The only, efficient, the only way a variance should be granted is measures have been, are taken to mitigate the effect of adjacent properties, which is particularly mine. Um, that would include this, uh, good eight to ten-foot privacy fence, which was not on their plans whatsoever until last week they realized that.
They're trying to work with you?
Yeah.
I'm just asking. Do they feel like?
Working with me under duress. They're working with me because they're afraid, they didn't, they tried to push this through without any knowledge of, or letting anybody know what was going on. And when they found out that there was some opposition, they suddenly, suddenly. This, the, the, the fence was sent to y'all about three hours ago, that request to, they do, it wasn't all the original request, not even close. The original request was four-foot setback. So, they're, they've made some. They have responded to some degree, and I appreciate that very much, and I think that if they can put that in writing, because I don't trust what they say, um, they have not been forthcoming in the past. And if you grant a variance and, and say they're gonna do a fence, though, what's to keep them from later on saying, well, we ran out of money, we can't put the fence up, or, hey, you know what, we changed our mind? I'm concerned about, and plus future building. I mean, you lower the, the offset, and they decide to add something later on, and suddenly, oh, it's already been approved. We got this offset approved a long time ago, so now we're gonna build something else, a deck or a patio or, or area of bands or other activities there. There, there's other plans they got in place that, that they're not mentioning. They also have no, no plans whatsoever for any kind of landscaping, uh, to provide any additional visual or sound buffer between my property and theirs. Um, it was just last Friday that I found out, and make it obvious, but I found out they were gonna have a second story on the building. That's, that's gonna make more noise. It should be, second story, that means there should be a, a larger buffer, not a buffer setback. That's more noise than, I mean, there's no way they can say it's not. And that means there's gonna be more parties, more activity, more people up there on the second floor. My house is right there. I mean, look at the plat. I'm, I'm right there. This is not, this is way, never should have been that close to begin with, and I got it's there, and I've got that, but.
Was it there when you moved in? Was the, was the pool was there when you moved in?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
The other thing, I, I, the, the pool has progressively and systematically expanded closer to my property. They've removed the trees that provided a complete buffer of sound and vision, uh, that were.
Know why the trees were removed? Do you know why the trees were removed?
This is a good one. Yeah. First one, the, was told that it was to improve the drainage around the pool. That's a good one. Second one was that because they said the, the tree roots causing problems. Well, cracks in the cement. Well, cement is cracked, probably more on the opposite side where there are no trees. the opposite side where there are no trees, and there are on the side of those trees. Two is I talked with a tree surgeon who's made it very clear that those tree roots have no impact whatsoever on that.
Were they Leyland cypresses?
They're the evergreens, green all year round. You couldn't even see my house, the pool, there was a complete buffer. And Danny approved having that cut down and still acts like he had nothing to do with it, which is false. So they, they took all the trees down. Why? Because they're planning on, then they took the fence that was between, there was a, an eight-foot buffer between, fence between my fence. They took that down, so now
How long ago was that fence taken down?
About three years ago.
Okay.
And now they're using my fence for the pool. I got kids climbing on my fence. I got, I got dogs. There are people throwing dirt and rocks at my dogs, or taunting my dogs. They're on top of my, my fence. That's a danger. There's no buffer whatsoever. And I had, I, you couldn't even see the, the pool or my house, and now you, you see the side of my house right there. I mean.
But if, if they do put a fence up, they have in writing.
It has to be tied to this approval, because like I say, just because it's, I don't trust them, they're going to say, well, we ran out of money. I mean, I need, I need something that's combined, that if this variance is approved, that measures such as appropriate landscaping, provide a buffer for sound and vision, and a, and a fence that's not just a dangling fence, that it's a safety factor. I mean, the kids shouldn't be climbing over my things and chasing balls in my backyard. And it didn't have to be there. They intentionally took all these buffers out, no regard for my home or the safety of the kids, or just, and they did that. And they just, three hours ago, sent him that addendum to their, their request. I mean, their request, this request was not for a fence, was not for, was for a four-foot buffer, no, no concerns or effort anyway to minimize its impact on my home or the residence and their noise or sight and sound. They're just bulldozing this over everybody. And I'm all for a new pool house, got it. Update it. You know what? They can update it without expanding it. They can update, yeah, you're right, they could build another side, but you know what? It's more expensive, so let's just, let's just take advantage of the person that's going to affect it and don't worry about him. It's not, you know, they could do it, it costs more money. Okay? If they want to do it in the same place, there's room for them to, to make it ADA compliant without, without making it quite so big. So you're right, they wouldn't be able to make it quite as big, but they could make it ADA compliant. They don't want to make it, they want to make it bigger, I'm in the way. Other is, Mr. Nanny's already told me, wants me to cut down the trees on my property, because he says they're going to be too close to the new building. He already tried to have them cut down the past without my permission, and Mr. and Mr. Nanny and I met at the pool earlier today, and he let me know that he plans on aggressively cutting back my tree limbs that are close to the building, regardless of whether or not it kills my trees. So he's, that, that's what I'm having to deal with, someone like that, that's his attitude, and that's what I have to put up with. So I have to protect myself, because there's, they could update the current structure or redesign it to be compliant. They want a variance to build a larger building. The total disregard for my property and privacy shown towards me in the past, and the original variance request of four feet with no plans for any buffer whatsoever, the threats to cut my trees down to further decrease the buffer between us is unacceptable, just unacceptable. That's not right. And thankfully, we have rules and laws in place to protect me and other homeowners in the community. There needs to be requirements attached to any variance approving, ways to minimize the impact on me and my home that I've lived in for the last 29 years.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this major PUD revision? Nanny, would you like to come back? Oh, please come forward. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Judy Brown. My address is 4166 Tyndall Drive, and I live on the street behind the pool. While I support the Jones Creek Owners Association building a new pool house and meeting ADA compliance, my expectation is that the following issues and concerns will be addressed before zoning approval from Columbia County. Under Code of Ordinance, Section 90-147, Community Recreation, new standard where the property is adjacent to residential use, a minimum 20-foot wide structural buffer is required along the property line. Larry Carter's property at 4165 Tyndall Drive abuts the Jones Creek pool art, pool area. The current pool house varies between seven and 10 feet from his property line. The pool area's chain-linked fence and trees that were abutted, Dr. Carter's property, were removed within the last few years, and now Dr. Carter's fence is used by the JCOA pool. This further eroded his privacy and buffer from the pool area. Also, the addition of 15 feet on the right of the building may infringe on the setback requirement of the property owned by the Jones Creek Clubhouse. The variance request is for the building setback to be four feet from Dr. Carter's property. Today, I believe it was revised from four to seven feet. While we understand that code has changed since the pool structure was built 30-plus years ago, I believe the new structure should have at least a 10-foot wide structural buffer from the rear of the building's roof line to Dr. Carter's property. Additionally, the zoning request is to add 15 feet to the right side of the current structure, which also abuts Dr. Carter's property. Since this further's non-compliance with the code, I do not support the extension of the property building along the line abutting his property. After speaking today with Jason Tice, the contractor engaged by Jones Creek Board, it was evident that he may not be aware of the property line, since a portion of the hill between the pool and the parking lot is owned by Jones Creek Clubhouse, as well as the area where ADA access will be added. Prior to submitting the variance request on July 2nd, no members of the JCOA Board asked property owners abutting the pool area for their thoughts or concern about the proposed building and setbacks. The communication they received, like all Jones Creek homeowners, was an email, and I gave an exhibit to the, copy of it to the planning department, dated July 18th, sent by Kim Francisco, the Secretary for Tripp Nanny. Prior to seeking approval for a building variance from Columbia County, it is our expectation that the proposed changes to the pool house and related property are presented at an open meeting for all Jones Creek homeowners. Communication of the plan to build a new pool house and other changes to the pool area should include: the proposed changes on the survey plot with a scaled diagram of the new pool house and structure, a scaled diagram of the current structure with its setbacks, so you can see what the difference is, a floor plan of the proposed structure and other modifications to the property with input asked from homeowners, a scaled diagram showing the height of the new pool house and a statement of the current height of the pool house, and a plan for sound buffering around the pool area to minimize noise impact on neighbors. With the safety being the highest priority, the steps behind the pool need to be removed or replaced with ADA compliant access. While I do not believe the pool house needs a second floor, meeting or party room, should it be done, I would expect the addition of an elevator so that all residents can access this area. Clarification of pool setbacks, buffer conditions, and fencing is noted on variance application addendum. We need that. Today, I asked Carrie Nguyen, the JCOA Board member charged with the pool, what the plan was for buffering and landscape. She said it had not been done. Confirmation that the current owner of the Jones Creek Clubhouse has approved usage of the parking lot for, for the teardown of the current pool house, as well as construction of the new pool house and modifications of the pool area. It is my understanding there's been no communication. Okay, that's another owner that abuts this property, the Jones Creek Clubhouse. I want confirmation that Tyndall Drive and its cul-de-sac, the area behind the pool, will not be used for the teardown of the existing clubhouse, for construction of the new pool house, modifications to the pool house, or as a parking lot. Today, I spoke with Carrie Nguyen, and I received assurance that this new facility will only be open from May to October, and that during these months, it closes at 9:00 PM. So that was something positive. They're not extending the hours of operation. But I, I just want to let you know that we've heard talk for years about renovating or building a new pool house. Nothing has been brought before the homeowners to say, what do you think? It's our money. And I'm not asking you, I guess you don't have any judgment over that, but it's a surprise when I see a thing, all of a sudden it's got a second floor, and it's, it's close. You would think that you'd try to be further back or more compliant, rather than as uncompliant as you are right now. But that's, you know, had they modified the existing structure, I understand, but this is a complete teardown. So I really encourage you not to support the variance request as it has been presented.
Thank you. Danny, would you like to come back?
Yeah. I mentioned, you know, I think it was 2019 and 2020 when we started talking about, Judy Brown was on the board and voted for renovations. We didn't know what at the time, but just to get that project going. And Dr. Carter said in writing, if, if that's not in writing, I don't, I don't know how, what we can do to put it in writing. That's what we plan to do. And if we can't use the parking lot, which we have a permanent easement to get to, to help with construction, then we'll use Tyndall Drive. There was just a brand-new home on Tyndall Drive. Did they have to get permission, permission from the residents of Tyndall Drive to put their construction trailer there? I don't think so. When you're building something new, that debris is expected. Were we supposed to airlift it in there if we can't use the parking lot? I've got the emails, I'm happy to send them to you. You may, some of y'all remember. We had a little issue with the guy who owns the clubhouse. I've got multiple emails asking for a meeting, for conversation. None have been answered through his attorney. We have to go through his attorney to get anything to him, and he doesn't answer. But that's, I mean, we're trying to be a pretty decent neighbor here. Today is the first time we've ever heard Mr. Carter say he would like to have some trees. He also didn't mention when our sewage backed up, the sewage line goes right along that red line right down through there. So find me a plumber, find me somebody who says those roots can potentially hinder pipes and plumbing. I'm happy to put up a tree. We would do whatever is necessary to get this done, but we also have to intake the integrity of what's under the ground, so we don't go through this again in three or four years. If you want to come next time the pipes are back up, I'll get Carrie to call you, and it is not a pretty situation.
Imagine.
It's, it's got to be fixed. We're more than happy to make some concessions, but we're not, every inch we come out, we get an inch closer to the pool, and there's not that much room in the front of that building for, to the, to the actual water, not the pool decking, the water in the swimming pool. We don't have enough room to come 15 feet out. It's not feasible. And we don't have any other property. We're not going to go to the other side of the pool, which would create a nightmare with plumbing. Then our plumbing would literally go under the pool, and we don't own enough property over there to do it. We're landlocked right there. It's the best we can do. We need the space.
Do you think in the next, do you think in the next two weeks, y'all could get together and, and come to a good, like you said, you'd be willing to put some cypress trees and have the fence, could that be something to?
If I can get assurances that they're not going to mess up the piping, I mean, that's where the plumbing is, that's where the lines are along that red line. I mean, we can't, I don't want to put a tree there. I'm more than happy to consider it. I mean, just today, he brought up the fence, and now we're adding the fence, another expense to us. I'm happy to do some things like that. However, the people who live further down Tyndall Drive, no, I don't think we're going to come to an agreement with them, because they don't.
Why did you take down the fence that was there?
They took it down when they cut down those trees. The former pool chairman, I was told this, I can't guarantee it, but it's in the meetings, Kim Houston, on the recommendation of Cal Hendrick and Rusty Jarrett, said we need to remove those trees for erosion control, et cetera, and they were cut down, I think, in 2021. I don't remember the circumstances. I was on the board. In fact, I think I was president, but I don't remember exactly why. And that's when they took down the fence. Why they didn't put it back up, I don't know. We'd have to ask them.
Well, the reason I ask is that Mr. Carter's fence, currently, we've got pictures of, is not code to the county for a fence around the pool.
Right, I heard that yesterday. Yep. And we
Because that, two-by-four in the middle's got to be at the top, so kids can't climb over.
Right.
And I know he mentioned he had people trying to climb over. That's why I was wondering why the fence was took down.
He's, yeah.
I, I, we're going to beat a dead horse. Well, we just got this. Literally just got this updated plan an hour ago. What do we post, buddy? All right, two weeks, let us, let us digest this. I want to see, because the rear windows is one thing that I
Well, one thing, you asked me about the windows. There are no windows on the upstairs. The bathroom stuff for those vents, I think my question was, are there windows on the back of the building?
And I was talking about upstairs.
And I said no, and that is correct.
Okay.
But, but I, we just got this. I think, I think to be
Well, we just, we just heard
Aaron Apple to everybody, I think I want to, I'm going to take, me personally, I just want to, it's not going to hurt anything.
Because I mean, I know
Do you want us to come back to you in two weeks? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And Jones Creek, I know y'all have been going through it, and you, you need a new pool, you need a new clubhouse.
By the way, I was over there today. I went, I went and walked that property.
The pool property?
Yes. Like on the perimeter, because I didn't have a badge and I wasn't too old to jump a fence.
You can, you can get it.
It's a site, so, but anyway.
So what'd you think? Where did you see space that this building could be built?
That's, well, the, the change in buffer space is what I'm going to go take a look at.
And remember, the, all the space behind that building is dead to us. It can't be used.
Oh, I agree.
It's got to be nothing but rats and snakes back there, and old equipment that we've recently just thrown away. I mean, it's, it's, it's wasted dead space.
I just, I just think personally, I, I want to, I want to go over there and walk it again.
All right. We'll take everybody with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
They're all retired. They can, they got time.
All right. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ 240802, major PUD revision at 785 Jones Creek to the August 15th planning commission meeting.
All in favor? Here. Where were we? Okay, variance, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a variance to Section 74-80, Design of Streets, for cul-de-sac length for Abundance Way. This shows the location of the property, well off Mistletoe Road, off of a named easement, Camper Club Road. And this shows the aerial of the property. You can see Abundance Way is already named. That is to, to serve the couple lots that they were given permission to subdivide on this property. The variance is in, is related to a request for a concept plan for the additional development of this site. And the proposal is to run a new private road back here off of Camper Club Road. We'll see in a minute that that will also include some improvements to Camper Club Road itself. But the, the variance request is for the length of this cul-de-sac. County code has a requirement that cul-de-sac should not be more than 700 feet long. However, topography or other conditions can allow for granting of a variance by the planning commission. In this case, we're dealing with a narrow piece of property. It's basically, it ends in a point out on the lake. It's surrounded by core property on all sides, so it's certainly a unique property situation. And there's really no, no way for this road to connect to anything else or for them to do a grid or loop kind of pattern on this property. So given these site conditions, staff is recommending approval of the variance.
Thank you. Owner and applicant from Sustainable Property Management, would you like to come forward?
Sustainable Property Management project. As Ms. Montgomery, shape to our property, where for us to put sort of connecting roads? Bridges are going to be involved here, I assume. Other than that, you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you. And would the audience in favor of this variance like to come forward and speak? Any audience opposed to this variance like to come forward and speak? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA 221 variance.
All in favor? Carrie's? Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is the concept plan for Abundance Point, and we just saw the variance for. Again, the location is off Abundance Way, and it is currently zoned R4, recreational residential. That zoning is not changing. It is intended to be developed under that existing zoning. This shows the aerial of the site. It does have some previous development on it. It used to be a campground site out here, so there are some existing buildings. Some of those have been or will be demolished, but some of them will be remaining, kind of accessory structures for the, the new residents out here. As the existing conditions show those existing buildings, as well as the topography on the site, there are some environmental features on the property that are shown on the concept plan. And the intent, again, is to develop the, the single road down the middle of the site. It is intended to be private. It will have to be paved to meet county code. There's portions of this right-of-way where the buffer for the property that is required by the core is also within the road right-of-way, but since it is a private road, we're not particularly concerned about that. It is a total of 12 lots, nine of which are residential lots, and three of which are common area lots. All of the residential lots meet the requirements for the R4 zoning district, and they will be served by private well and septic systems. There are no county utilities out here. As we do have the soil survey submitted with the concept plan as well, and the Health Department has taken a look at that and provided additional details for what will need to be provided for the Health Department at the time of permitting. Additionally, the county current, or this property currently does not have access to a paved road, meeting county standards. Camper Club Road itself is not paved. It's not actually a road at this point. It's essentially a glorified easement. So part of the improvements for this project will include dedicating right-of-way and paving Camper Club Road to provide access to this property. That, that is part of, of these plans as well, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Abundance Point.
All in favor? Carrie's? We have any legal matters today?